I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, August fourteenth at seven P.M. The first agenda item is a discussion for North Brown LLC. Would you like to join us?
Yeah. Don't have much. They submitted the deeds to all the units that you're looking for that we've sold. And provided an updated sales and construction. Sisterance done. We're hoping to convey the last affordable in Phase One, last unit next week. So, that's about it.
That's good.
He's going to complete Phase One next week with that last unit. Can we drop that off that list that we get? It's a little confusing when we have all those ones.
No more activity going on there.
If it's complete, just take it off. It's kind of hard to follow with the...
And wasting paper.
Well, I was thinking green too, but I didn't...
Did you see the stack of deeds?
No, I didn't.
How many were in Phase One?
Well, that's what I think. We don't have the perfect place, don't we? In the town?
Ten?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not happening.
Oh, you get them. The assessors office gets them.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-eight.
So, it was just a matter of...
Sales, that good in the second phase?
We're working on the second phase, yeah.
Any sales?
We do, yeah. Got a couple of affordables in the second phase. And three or four markets.
Excellent.
So, yeah, it's been a work.
Great.
How many buildings you have started up in that number two?
In the second phase, we got five buildings, ten units.
Five buildings started already, going?
Yeah, various stages of construction.
How are the... I took a write-up, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. How are they called?
Storm's House.
Well, green whatever.
The water garden.
Yeah, water gardens.
Rain gardens.
Thank you. How are those working out?
Most of them are working good. There's still a couple we need to do some work on. One or two got silted up.
Yeah.
So, we need to clean them up.
Was the monterey we got that day?
Yeah.
I can try my phone. The mud was coming down my driveway.
Your phone? In your phone?
No, no. I took pictures of it coming down my driveway. It's like, are you kidding me?
They soaked in your phone, John.
You know?
So, Tim, you mentioned that you have done the rain gardens before.
Yes.
This type of whatever. And you did another development in Harvard?
Harvard.
What was the name of it?
Apple Tree Estates.
And where... Do you have an address for it, or not?
I did that like twenty-two years ago.
I wouldn't even ask.
She's going to take a write-up.
I'm not sure I'm going to go to Apple Tree Estates anyway.
Besides, if we call me, we'll drive over to find it together.
Mike?
With that dropping the buildings off there, but if we can keep the ratio of affordable to monteray so we don't get confused on that. Or I don't get confused on it.
Yeah, they're marked on the sheet, which are four of those.
Bill, do you...
Was that Donald?
I think Ed's summary was accurate. The only thing I would add is, I know the fire chief was looking for a minor additional amount of money for the sister. He wants to basically do the testing to finally accept it. He's not gone through that. He has a guy, I forget what the quote was, three hundred something dollars?
Six hundred.
Six hundred dollars. So, he was asking that they obviously...
Provide that.
Provide that so that they could go through the final testing on that.
That's something you're aware of?
Well, we just got it yesterday. We're looking at it. You know.
All right. So, you don't have any problem with the chief's request?
Well, we thought the chief was going to do it. I'm not sure that it's, you know, that the town was going to do the flow test because he's the one that's going to operate the system.
I don't think that's on the budget. Just, I shouldn't say that, but I think I recall. It's not in the budget.
Yeah, probably not. Yeah. And, yeah, so, yeah, you know, and there's, I think there's extra money in the STNT account.
Oh, they're marked.
There's about thirteen thousand dollars in that.
I'll have to touch base with them to see.
According to that, and I don't think they'll have that much. And they just got to do their final plan.
Right, right.
So, it shouldn't be that much. So, if we could take it out of that, then it...
Yeah, Task One, I think. The design, I think there's money left over.
There was a few hundred dollars in that. Yeah. So, yeah.
Anything else? Bill, do you?
I'm good. I read all the documents that I've got from Maria, so I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, yeah, in terms of, will you see us next week, next month? Let's see what comes up.
Yeah, you know what? You'll be in touch on bill. If there's anything that's worthwhile.
Hundred and twenty-four.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Hey, if you don't show up next week, call me, will you?
I'll stop down.
I don't want to be lonely. You don't need to call.
We have about five minutes before the next public hearing. You want to do the minutes?
Yes.
We have to do the minutes of July third.
I have a correction on page one. Under public hearing, second paragraph, Mr. Holland made a motion to, should be, I think, admit, but I was not there, not omit.
He didn't want it to become part of the record.
Part of the record. That letter that was given to us from...
Okay.
From, yeah, that's...
Okay, all right, I see. Okay, so was it omit? Good, thanks. I wasn't there, so who knew?
Yeah, Tom?
Mr. Lane, where the hell you been hiding, buddy?
We good on that now?
We have a motion.
Making a motion.
People for a change.
Excuse me, I think we're in the middle...
That's the coaching job, go.
Excuse me, we're in the middle of a meeting, Mr. Tassino.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the floor. Were you aware of that?
Looking for a second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Tassino, to approve the minutes of July third as written. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let me do the other one too.
I believe that the notes of July tenth, 2019, accepted as written.
I second that. We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to who the minutes of July tenth as written. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next agenda item is public hearing for Dan Dudley, case number two zero one nine dash zero eight, one sixty Wallace Street. Date of his application was July twenty-third. And it was advertised, this hearing was advertised in the Telegram Gazette and posted in the Town Hall, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at seven fifteen on Wednesday..." Wednesday, August thirteenth. Something says May. "...in the Douglas Municipal Center, Community Meeting Room, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas Mass., till you hear the application. Public hearing for Dan Dudley is requesting a variance in a rural agricultural IRA zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws for a rear yard setback and a side yard setback for two sheds. The bylaw requires a rear yard setback of twenty-five feet and a side yard setback of twenty-five feet. The applicant proposes a rear yard setback of four feet in connection with the shed located to the northwest, shed number one on the plan, and a rear yard setback of two feet in connection with the shed located to the southwest, shed number two on the plan. The applicant proposes side yard setbacks of five feet on each side of shed number one. The property is located at one sixty Douglas Street..." I'm sorry, one sixty Wallace Street. Assessors map, one fifty-eight, parcel nineteen." Thank you. Okay. The planning board has sent in a... Saying that they had no objections to the attached request. And the voting members on tonight's, on this case are Mrs. Holmes, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Tassino, Mr. Bombara, and myself, the applicant, and the representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board members. I'm Henry Lane, on behalf of the applicant, who is Mr. Dudley, who is seated in the rear corner. You know, Mr. Pollard, the immediate butter to the west. This is, I think, the third time we've been here, so you probably know who I am.
Yes.
And I think we've finally come to a conclusion that at least the neighbors can live with. So, Mr. Pollard and Mr. Dudley have gone through this in great detail, and they've basically come to an accommodation that will allow the neighbors to return some integrity to the common property line and also accommodate the sheds that were built over a period of many years. Some disregard to the actual property line. So, in order to bring everything into compliance, we prepared this plan, and Mr. Pollard has graciously agreed to convey a little strip of land to Mr. Dudley so that we can actually get the shed number one back onto Mr. Dudley's property. And Mr. Dudley has agreed to take the shed, shed number two, which is currently on Mr. Pollard's property, and move it onto his own property. However, we sort of, out of a dilemma is that we have a very shallow lot. And in the location of these buildings, there's actually not enough physical space to actually comply with setbacks for these buildings because it just isn't, you know, a lot of depth to accommodate that. And, you know, the sheds have to stay in a place that allows for the existing buildings to be utilized in a functional way. So, this seems to be the best resolution that unfortunately doesn't comply with the little requirements of the zoning bylaws, but does accommodate the needs of the neighbors. So, as you indicated earlier, on shed number one, we're looking for a variance for the setback to four feet and similarly to the sideline, four feet, so that we can accommodate that shed. And then with respect to shed two, we're going to move that onto Mr. Dudley's property. And we're asking for a two-foot setback as opposed to the twenty-five that's required. So, that's the simple explanation. As I indicated, theoretically, this is a very long lot. And if you put these buildings all the way up against shiny, shady lane, you could theoretically meet the setback requirements, but it would be so far from the existing dwellings that it would be essentially useless. So, as I indicated in the application, Dudley has his emergency generator and other supplies that he has occasion to use. And if it's at the end of the property, you know, several hundred feet away, it certainly is not accessible and certainly during inclement weather would not be functional. So, we're sort of, we have that dilemma. And if we move it straight to the east, it kind of blocks his entrance to his house. So, that's a problem. If he moves, he's already encroaching on the theoretical setback for his reserved septic area, so he really can't move it any further in the southerly direction either. So, he's kind of boxed in. As I say, unfortunately, a lot of this was done years ago. Some of it actually by his dad, you know, forty years ago. Shed number one was more recently, but as you can see from the property, there's actually a fence line there. And, you know, I guess Mr. Dudley made the reasonable assumption, I guess, that the fence line was the property line, and, you know, now finds out that it isn't and finds himself in this dilemma. So, we're asking for some mercy, shall we say, some grace from the board to accommodate the situation that we have and, as I say, really improve it to a great extent. Although it's really an imperfect solution, but it's the best that we have available.
Kate, Lou?
Is everybody happy with that?
Mr. Pollard is sitting right there.
Are you guys all happy? Everybody's happy?
Yes, sir. We're ducky.
Okay. As long as you're good. As long as you guys are happy, I'm on your side.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. If anyone wants to speak, you're welcome to speak, but we just need to be identified for the minute, so...
I should be speaking to you, not you.
Yes. Anybody else have any other questions for this application?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I was just asking, I was going to ask you, did he ever get a permit to, on shed number one or number two from the building department?
As I say, shed numbered, shed number two...
I mean, we're just voting on something he's never been refused for, and now he's asking for a variance that it's something he's never been approved.
Right. Well, as I say...
But, I mean, the shed is lot, it's sixteen by twelve. I can't build that in my yard.
No, no, we understand that. We've had extensive discussions, and the building inspector has indicated that we have to apply for a building permit, but we can't get a building permit without a variance. It's a catch twenty-two. We can't get a building permit unless we have a variance.
The shed's up to something.
Well, I understand that. But, and understanding any agreement is that if we get the variance, he will apply for the building permit and he will pay the fee, et cetera. Shed number two was built by his dad some forty years ago. We have no idea what, you know, what the situation there was. You know? If he needs a permit, he'll apply for it.
Yeah.
But, you know, we've had ongoing discussions...
I mean, one other correction I want to make is that his wife told us that he knew that he was on someone else's property when he did this. So, for you, no, I'm just correcting you because it came up a month ago, that's all. Anyway, Mike, you got something?
Oh, yeah, you got it?
Yeah, I'm done.
Pass it down when you're done.
Can we use this as a symbol? Other than the inconvenience of moving his generator during a storm or whatever, which I do the same thing, I don't know if anybody else does, he could at least meet three of his setbacks by utilizing the other fifty percent of his property.
No, there's no question that, as I indicated going in, if you go to the very northerly side of the property, there is theoretically enough setback required so that he can meet those setback requirements if he, you know, shifts the shape of the shed, or the orientation of the shed and moves it, you know, several hundred feet from the building. But, at that point, you know, I mean, you've got a foot and a foot and a half of snow in the ground, and you're trying to get your generator, and you've got to drag it, you know, a couple hundred feet when you're a senior citizen. You know, that's a pretty...
Technically, I'm a senior citizen too, and I...
But, you're not as senior as Mr. Dudley.
I feel the same way as Mike. You can buy a seventy-five hundred-foot cord, leave the generator in the shed...
You could go right behind these other two buildings.
And run it down to connect to the house.
Not that far. You don't have to go up the shady lane. You can go right behind these.
Yeah, right. Carport in the garage.
And you mentioned the carport in the garage when Larry went out there last year. In his violation letter, he said multiple buildings. I don't think he was just referring to these two sheds. I think he was referring to everything that was on it. But, we're here for the two sheds, so I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to...
As I understand it, you know, it's been a moving target. And as you remember, the first time we were here, we specifically asked which sheds. We were initially told it was shed one and shed two.
Then the town attorney said it was shed one in the tent.
Yeah, and if we're going to go back, we... One of your applications, probably the previous one to this one, had, there was interference with the septic system, which is also on here. And I requested the location of that septic system, and we got a hand-drawn sketch of a cesspool. So, now we have a drawn septic system. I actually stopped in the Board of Health, and they have no record of it. Maria in her file has a proposed septic system, but it doesn't have a stamp or a sign on, so I don't even know if the septic system's there, to be honest with you.
Well, we went through that, and we do have the Board of Health as-built plan.
Okay.
And then, as you'll see from the note, because there was some discrepancy in what the as-built showed, we had a ground-penetrating radar company come out and actually physically locate it on the ground. So, we are fairly certain, and that was in Mrs. Holmes' request, that we do that, and we did it.
That was...
You asked us to locate the septic system.
It's been so long ago.
But, as in the comment, we spent, you know, crazy amounts of money to have ground-penetrating radar out there to actually, you know, address the issue, so there's no question where it is. That's where it is. That's where the trenches are. That's where the opening to the septic tank is. You know, that's, without physically excavating it, that's as good as we could do.
Right.
Yeah. What type of foundation is for the shed number one, please?
It's a gravel base.
Slip-wash?
It doesn't have a, doesn't have a poured foundation.
Has anyone done any research on the cost to move that?
Yeah, we've looked at moving it.
I'm sorry?
We did look at, I mean, it's physically movable. It's not, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you. It's physically movable. One could, you know, with the right equipment and enough money, one could move that shed. It was moved onto the site. It can be moved off.
They do that all the time. So, I'm just wondering if it's not installed into the ground?
Nope.
It's on top. And what year was that built?
About seven or eight years ago. I don't know the exact date, but I know it's in that range. That's when it was, I don't know when it was built, that's when it was installed.
Two thousand and ten plus, two thousand and ten plus or minus?
Yeah.
That's nine years. Just wondering if we, in any transition in the town government at the time. Shed number two, you were going over south and what's south and what's north and whatever, and I was not following you. So, my question is simply, you're moving that shed...
Yep.
And you're leaving two feet from the back of the property line. Why is that? Why cannot that be moved further?
Well, I mean, theoretically, it can be.
Okay.
But, you know, you're putting into somebody's front lawn.
Oh, well, that's too bad.
It is too bad.
Could I say something?
Seventy-five feet.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Henry?
What's that?
No, do you have anything else on that?
No, I...
Okay. All right, who would like to be recognized?
I'd like to say something about that point. It wouldn't be in the middle of my lawn, it would be in the middle of a rock field. I don't have a lawn. It's all rocks, big boulders. There's no other place to put it.
Okay.
Cover the boulders with it.
I have to say, I'm on board with Mike. I would have no problem if they met three of the setbacks in giving a variance for the fourth one. And I don't see the terrible inconvenience placing it directly behind the house or by these carports. And you could meet the front setback, both sides, and get a variance for the rear setback. And make a true effort to meet the zoning bylaws. That's my take on it. I think it's fixable...
It is.
With one, a variance for whatever it may be, rear setback.
Yeah.
Two sides, it'd be fine, and meet the front yard setback. You know, if it's placed up here...
You're talking about number two?
Both.
Number one into, number one could use and move right up to its carport.
Yeah.
And I don't see it, based on this, it's not a great scale, but I think it could be put within fifty feet of the house. Meet the sideline setbacks, meet the front setback, and I'd be on board to give him a variance.
You're going to go around those carports and meet it.
And I think, I recall, I think those are just tents.
The carports, yeah.
So, they could be easily moved up.
Yeah. Well, go behind them.
Potentially, I think the other one...
Well, the other one appears to be maybe just, it says garage on here. Appears to be maybe a little longer than the shed number one. But, even that, if you could move the carport and put the other garage behind that one, close to the garage that we just mentioned, so...
I mean, he has a chance to meet most of the setbacks.
It's a large piece of land behind the garage.
Yeah, just as remote, you know.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Well, yeah, what I was getting at is, you see, two people, neighbors, they're completely happy with each other, and I don't even see why, you know, I mean, if one of those were my neighbors, and we should have made a deal before we even get here the first time, what's the big deal? They're both friends?
The big deal is the little book that they have called zoning bylaws. That's a big deal.
One hundred percent. You're one hundred percent. But, they're neighbors, they've got to get along, and they seem like they're getting along. Why would we get involved?
I think they, regardless, either way that it goes, they would still get along afterwards. That would jeopardize their relationship.
Well, I think, what if you put a burden where it costs ten thousand dollars to move something, and they're not really, you know, I mean, why would you put a burden like that on somebody if they both get along?
Yeah, I think ten thousand dollars might be a little rich for moving a shed, because if they get ten thousand to move a shed, I'm in the wrong business.
Yeah, well, you know that for years, but that's beside the point.
Yeah, I'm doing fine with that.
I just don't know why we would get involved with neighbors.
Well, for one thing, it sets a precedent.
Sets a precedent for the rest of this board universe.
It really isn't neighbors.
We want to help people through the process, and if we can find a way to fulfill the needs of them, make them right.
We've had multiple applicants that have come in before this one, that they want to put something because that's where they wanted, but they had other options.
Yes.
Yeah, but these are already here.
And we've also been very careful in going down to small variances, like, yeah, two-foot, two-foot is...
Then we set a precedent, and everybody else has to be two feet from the lot line.
Excuse me, this board cannot set a presence. It can't set one.
Because everything is, you're right, everything is totally individual.
If it set one, I wouldn't be in court...
That's correct.
...with my place up on Wild Lake, because it can't set one.
Right.
Okay. But I'll tell you right now, I see no, two people are getting along. They shouldn't even have came here in the first place. But they did. But they did.
Well, they were cited by the town for failing to follow the town zoning bylaws.
Perhaps, if I can ask for the board's indulgence one more time, could we ask that...
I need my hearing. I got to turn it over.
All right, let me turn that out for you.
Yeah, make believe you're collecting money.
Perhaps, you know, now that we've sort of heard the board's opinion, unless there's other members of the public that want to be heard, I'd like to ask for the board's indulgence to continue this for a month so we can look at these options and decide if we want to go forward or withdraw it at that point.
That would be okay with me.
Yeah, we've had so many continuances in this case, it's just...
Let me just ask one question. Did Mr. Dudley pay to re-advertise this?
He did.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to see it get resolved. This case has been dragging for...
Well, we know what happens if we're going to deny this. We won't be able to come down here just once you talk to your, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman, talk to your client and see what you can do.
Well, that's what I say. I want to look at, you know, you may be, I suspect it's a high probability, we'll withdraw it if we can't come up with something that's reasonable.
If you withdraw it, you'll be in violation of the town zoning bylaws, right?
That's true.
Okay.
Would that make him subject to being fined, Mike?
Yes, it would. So we haven't fined him to this point because he's been working to try to resolve this. So at some point, when you guys say no, the fine's got to start until the bill is moved.
It needs to be solved.
I mean, I don't see any major hardship, just get a variance, a rear yard variance, and you meet the sidelines, you meet the front setback, and...
We still have to do that, so that's why I guess I'm asking for the indulgence for a month.
You just want to do a little measuring and figure out how much where?
Yeah.
Mike?
Do we have to accept their withdrawal?
I don't believe we do.
No. Okay. So, in my opinion, it's a new application, technically. They're asking for a month to compare notes and come up with a better solution than what's here. I don't think that's unreasonable as far as withdrawing at this point, because this has been going on for close to a year now. I wouldn't be inclined to do it if I had to.
And I'll agree with you.
I'm on board with that as well.
So do you need a motion to continue?
Continue with the understanding there'll be no more continuances?
Well, I think that's pretty, I think that's pretty clear. Mr. Lane got what I was saying as well.
The case does have a history of continuances that end up being three months down the road instead of one month down the road. And I think it's just time to...
I would like to see this resolved next. I would like to see this resolved next month, one way or the other.
Okay.
If he was to move it, how long would we give him to move it?
I think we'll talk about that next month.
Yep, let them do that.
We don't even know what they want to do. Well, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm not going, I want to deal with hypotheticals. I want to deal with actual, what's going on.
Just before we get there, are you, is it clear to you, I guess, where the board stands on?
That's very clear.
Okay. All right. Mike, do you have a motion?
Yeah, what's the case number on this one? All right, that's right. Yeah, so I make a motion to continue case number two zero one nine dash zero eight until next month.
September eleventh.
September eleventh.
At seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen, per Maria.
It's a dark day. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Do we have a second?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, so it's four in favor, one opposed. Mr. Tissio opposed. Thank you.
Can you give me something to do?
What was the equipment you were moving in your garage today?
Well, you have a business.
It wasn't my business.
Oh, was your business?
Yeah, a guy called me up that was moving it to help him out, but tell me, what are you doing in your garage? What is your equipment?
Okay, you know what? We got another board meeting, so. The next agenda item is, thank you, John, is case number two zero one nine dash zero nine, public hearing of Douglas Ward, one seventy-nine Wallace Street. The hearing was advertised and registered, telegramming, and posted in the town hall, and reads as follows. The town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at seven thirty on Wednesday, August fourteenth, in the Douglas Municipal Center, Community Meeting Room, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the application. The public hearing for Douglas Ward has filed for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, Douglas zoning bylaws, Section nine point three and Section three point four point five, non-conforming, single residential structures, to request the alteration to a structure on a lot with insufficient frontage and area. Alteration to a structure which encroaches upon the required yard setbacks. Enlarge the footprint of an existing building without exceeding the height of visual restrictions, and proposed alterations will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in a rural agricultural RA zone district. The property is located at one seventy-nine Wallace Street, assesses map one fifty-eight, parcel ten. We do have a correspondence from the planning board. The planning board said they do not oppose this request. Voting on tonight's case will be Mrs. Holmes, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Tissino, Mr. Bombara, and myself. And Maria, do we get all the green cards?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, the applicant or the representative?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Ward, and I am here with my wife, Linda. And so we are here today to talk with the board, Mr. Chairman and the board, regarding a proposed renovation of our cottage at one seventy-nine Wallace Street. We believe, and we hope you'll agree, that the renovation will overall be beneficial to the town of Douglas, as well as the health and safety of the community in the general area due to the upgrade of the septic system from a cesspool to an approved tight tank. We are very fortunate to have been welcomed into the reservoir community over the last fifteen or so months. You know, we have some great neighbors, and we're very fortunate as well that our most direct abutters, we know are in support of the project, you know, including Ms. Harriet Van Dyck, who's here with us tonight. So also want to, Robert Murphy, Robert Murphy Environmental Consultants is with us here tonight. Bob's been doing tremendous work on our behalf, you know, being responsive and proactive with the conservation and Board of Health as well. So Bob, here on your vacation, you know, we really appreciate everything you've done for our family. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Bob.
Okay, I just had one question. And here I look, it says renovation or expansion, but based on the footprint, I see, is it being demolished and brand-new?
I do believe that, from a construction perspective, they'll probably end up demolishing it.
Going to save the border, too? For old times' sake.
All right, but it says expansion of existing structure, but actually it's replacement of an existing structure.
I think that's probably accurate.
My name is Bob Murphy, Murphy Associates, representing Doug Ward tonight.
Give you a little bit of history of where we're at right now. We have had a meeting with the Conservation Commission, and we have a plan, the original plan that was submitted to Conservation and to you has been approved by the Board of Health. This is a septic system plan for a tight tank. Essentially, what we're doing is removing an existing cesspool, which is located approximately thirty feet away from the open water. Groundwater there is approximately twenty-four inches, so we know the cesspool, when it's in use, is having a detrimental effect to the lake. So that is being removed. It is a voluntary upgrade, whereas the system has not been officially failed, but they purchased the property, they want to do the right thing. So we originally had showed the building with a porch approximately twenty-nine feet away from the wetlands. Conservation, and the reason for that was so that we could meet all the requirements, Title V requirements for the tight tank. It kind of pushed the building forward. There's three wells along the front of the property, one owned by the applicant, Harriet Van Dyck has a well, and there's another well to the right. We worked it out with the Board of Health so that we could meet the minimum requirements of fifty feet from the neighbor's wells, and we're approximately thirty feet away from the owner's well. The Board of Health has given us a way before that because this is a tight tank. It's a monolithic, single-piece tank. It absolutely cannot leak. That being said, what we looked at after the Board of Health requirements, Conservation wanted us to push the building back a little bit. So what we have before you is a plan now showing that we need relief on the lot itself because it doesn't meet the requirements for frontage and area. What we have done is to locate the side yard setbacks basically the same as what they are now. They're within a few inches of what they are. And the setback from the water is basically the same. It's like eight inches different. One point to be made is that the setback on the water side is actually a porch that's going to be on sonotubes, a six-foot-deep porch. So the building is essentially in the same area. The porch is on sonotubes in an area where there's a concrete structure, like a deck, an old concrete deck. So we're essentially holding the septic. But as I say, we're here tonight to request approval for an existing non-conforming lot with a single-family structure. And what we're proposing is to remove the existing structure, replace the stone foundation, replace it with a concrete foundation, and have a two-story structure in that area. Now, we had also submitted some documentation from the building inspector where he essentially wrote us a letter stating that we needed to get a special permit for the reasons that you had mentioned. So we went through the building department, followed procedure. We were told to get a special permit, so we're here for that reason.
Do you have a set of plans yet? Sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, actually, that's my question. Do you have a set of plans yet?
I was looking for it.
I think we had submitted something, but we also haven't submitted.
Yeah, no, this is all we got.
Where did you submit it to, please?
Did you submit any of the building? Thought we had submitted, no? I did bring a copy. Anyway, these are hard copies showing the building.
I was just curious, did he, do you have a set of these plans?
No, there's no applications submitted. He just...
I see.
Yeah, we haven't officially applied for the building permit.
We'd like to reference any decision, the plan, so that people don't build an eight-foot porch instead of a six or...
Yeah, yeah. The, as far as the plan view is concerned, you know, what you see is what we're going to do, but as far as the elevations these plans show, what we're proposing.
I don't know if you want to see this.
May I say what they... Sure. If it's the same, you shouldn't even be here.
It's not quite the same.
You can make it the same. You shouldn't even be here. And we don't give out special permits.
What is he talking about?
We give out special permits.
We don't.
Yes, we do.
I thought that was taken away from us.
No, for something else.
The Zone Board of Appeals.
Site plan review.
If they don't know, if they, but he could follow the same footprint, and he wouldn't even have to be here.
Now, there's a bylaw, if he tears down an existing, and it's non-conforming, he needs a special permit to rebuild, and that's why he's here.
Yeah, we'd like to rebuild the building. And meet current billing codes.
They're not beating the building on the same footprint. It's close, but it's not the same.
Very similar. So what we actually did was we twisted the building a little bit so that we could better meet the setbacks.
You see that?
I see that, too.
You're correct in that they're not, they're about the same. They're like putting it almost right on.
Top of one another. And he understands, but he still...
But even if he does that...
He wants a little bit larger. He's just, he's turning and making it less non-conforming, if you know what I mean. He's straightening it up, you know, so.
We actually...
The building inspector had his hand up a moment ago. I'll call upon him.
If one or two families in the zoning bylaws, it's my discretion whether it's increasing the non-conformity. If he's going back on the same footprint, they wouldn't be here.
Right.
But they turned the building and making it bigger, so they went outside and set it.
Thank you. I was, I was out that way last week.
The water ran out of ink.
They give copy heaven. Yeah, I was out there last week sadly.
That's a photocopy of it.
Why didn't I talk to you before?
Fund from bits and no ink.
And so where do you stand with conservation, Mr. Chairman?
We are, we're going back to conservation. They requested that we move the building back a little bit, and what that required was that we had to get a... Well, they have a bylaw that basically says, whatever the distance to the water is, you have to meet that same distance. And we put a porch about four feet into it, that setback. So they said, sorry, you know, move the building back to where, you know, the front wall was. And we did that. We're answering to, how could I say it, several different masters here. We're trying to, you know, satisfy all of them. So what we did was to revise the plan as you see it now, and we sent that back to Conservation to receive this, to review. And essentially, they had no issue with the tight tank being, you know, where it was. It was fifty feet away. Their only concern was that they have a bylaw, and they like to stick to it. So we pushed the building back to what the original building was. That kind of squeezed us a little bit relative to this setback to the tight tank. But we've worked it out where the slab for the cellar, it's not a full cellar, it's going to be four feet, and the slab of the cellar is actually higher than the tight tank, so you meet the setback requirements.
Have you got a tight tank in the old house now?
There's a cesspool right here, right over here.
But you're going to put a tight tank in the old house first, right?
We're going to put a tight tank...
Tight tanks right there.
In the front yard, over here.
No.
It won't be in the building.
No, you got to put a tight tank in the old house. You cannot put a tight tank with new construction. So the secret to the whole deal is you got to put that in the old house.
I think that's a Board of Health issue.
You got to go DEP.
Well, that may be, but we're zoning.
We went to the DEP. DEP approved it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. And they basically, and then what, here's what they told us. They said, oh, we're kind of busy lately, you know? We know what you guys are asking for. If the town is okay with it, we're okay with it. And the town approved it.
It's called pass the buck.
Well, they just don't have the staff. They used to give you...
The state is working on...
Never use a tight tank in your construction.
I don't know what they're doing, the money.
No, 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 this is not, this is, it's not new construction. There's an existing septic system, an existing house. You have to prove that you cannot put a septic system on the lot.
Right.
And then when you do that, they say, okay, you've proved to us, the only way to satisfy the requirement is with a tight tank.
Mike, do you have a question?
Well, I have a question, but I just want to respond to what he just said about reciting rules on the tight tank. Can you increase the flow when you put in a tight tank? Is it used to increase the flow of the house?
You can do anything you want.
I'm asking the engineer.
Oh, sorry.
No, generally, the, where it is a tight tank, the flow is going to be...
You have an existing house, that's a one-bedroom house. You're proposing a two-bedroom house, can you put in a tight tank that increases the flow?
If you have approval from the town to make it a two-bedroom house, then you can put in a tight tank.
From the Board of Health or from the building that Bob had?
From the tight, yeah, it's for a tight tank only. It's not for a septic system. You cannot increase the flow to a septic system.
Okay.
The tight tank, you could have, you know, you could call a one-bedroom and have 10 people in it, they don't care.
Sure.
You're gonna have to pump that tank every time it's full.
Yep.
So what it, what it, basically what it is, is you got a single-family house, and every time that tank is full, we don't care how many bedrooms you have, you're gonna have to pump it out. It's, it's not a system that is sending fluid into the ground, which you can, you cannot increase the flow for a septic system, for what we call a soil absorption system, cannot do that.
All right, so can I get my own question?
But it almost is, it's a moot point with the, with the tight tank.
Yeah. And I'll tell you something, the, the smallest size septic system you can build in the state of Massachusetts is two bedrooms. But that, the, the point that we're making here is, if, if we are asking to have the building increased to two bedrooms, and really the reason being, there was like four or five people living in this house before, and they had beds all over the place.
Sure.
So, you know...
Call, call it what it is.
Back to my original question, I'm just curious about the tight tank. The height of the building now, is that one bedroom on the first floor, or is there a two-story house now? No.
That's one bedroom on the first floor.
So what's the height of the house, you think? Because your new house is about 27 feet.
Yeah, the house is like, the house is like 12 feet high.
Yeah.
It's, it's a small attic, crawling attic.
You can go there?
No, I didn't go there.
I went there last week Saturday.
So what's across the street, John?
What's across the street? There's a lot behind him that another person owns.
Yeah, but no house there.
No house.
Excuse me, with a tight tank, you could have five bedrooms.
Yeah, this is all really a Board of Health issue, so...
No, it's, it's a Board of Health issue, but the idea being, we have, if we want to increase a single-family house to two, two-bedroom house, you know, let's put it this way, the assessors show it as a single-family house, and we know that there were more than two people living in it. The idea is, we want it to be legit two, two-bedroom house. That is a request from the zoning Board of Appeals.
That's us.
That's us.
That's you.
Conservation?
Conservation has no say in it.
Everything else, Mike?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So you, you're confident that this proposal will fly with Conservation? The only reason I ask, we had a case five, six, seven years ago...
Wasn't that long.
It wasn't not that long, probably, okay.
It wasn't that long.
So, we, we approve what the people asked. Then they went to Conservation, Conservation said, no, we want you to move it two more feet. So they had a variance for what we gave them, and then they had to be two feet closer to comply with Conservation, which, I mean, I respect, they have different interest in the zoning board test, so we, they had to refile.
Well, do we answer your question? The Conservation Commission told us what to do, because we said, we're, you know, we're gonna be going to the ZBA, we're gonna go to help and all that, and, and they basically said, look, ours bylaw says that you should keep the corner of that house in the same distance as where it is now. And so what we did was we pushed everything, the porch and everything, back, even though there was a porch there before, but they had taken it down. So, we basically did what they told us to do, so we anticipate they'll approve it.
Okay. So you're confident, that's what we're asking.
So if you're confident, then I guess we can move forward, if you're not, we could continue till after the Conservation.
We revised this plan so we wouldn't be wasting your time.
Okay.
That's great. And they, you know...
And we like to do them in a month, when you come in, we like to make decisions.
Well, that's why we jumped as soon as, you know, we had our meeting first with Conservation, and when they, they based, they gave us our marching orders.
Yeah.
And we're following them.
Okay. I'm good, Mr. Chairman, so...
Anybody else have any questions? All right, does anybody else, anyone that would like to speak on this case?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Sorry?
My name's Tom Kalidowski, 86 Peters Cove Road, I've known Doug and his wife since they moved in, and we have no, no issues with it whatsoever.
Thank you. Does anybody else who'd like to speak on this matter?
I'm Harriet Van Dyke, and I own the cottage for, since the land and back, and my cottage's a big one, and I sold the little one to them, and they're wonderful, they do everything for me, clean the camp, and I'm gonna be 92, and I'm still going!
Come back and share, will you?
And I'm the boss, with the, tell them over there, I'm the boss!
That's true. I agree with that.
I agree with that, Harriet. I have confidence that she'll keep it alive.
And I've had these septic systems, and I never had any trouble with either one of them, and I've been there since 1945, you can look up my papers, 46 we built, never any trouble with either septic system. I have them pumped out every two years, and that's it.
Great, thank you.
The ground is great.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick to close the public hearing for case number... Case number 2019-09, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. Would like to make a decision tonight?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for Douglas Ward, 2019-09, and add the prints that are here.
Numbers on the bottom.
Drawing file number is 719-30-49/9.
Drawn by Stephen Dix.
Drawn by Stephen Dix.
Okay.
And date on it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Date?
Yes, 7/13/19.
Do we keep a copy of these?
Yeah, we, yeah, we need...
Those are yours.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are yours.
Okay.
Do you want one that you can read?
That would be helpful if you could.
Absolutely.
Just for fire.
Of course.
If you, if you can stop into Marie and exchange it, just can I have a glass?
Yeah, why don't we keep that one, you can...
This can, they're getting in now, so that thing won't scan.
Okay.
Does that get seconded?
Uh, well, actually, John, do you want, do you want to refer to the, the plan by the engineer as well?
Oh, yeah, as far as the, yeah, as far as the septic tanks and all that, the purpose of the foundation plan over here from Robert Murphy Associates Incorporated, there was a date on here?
Lower right-hand corner.
Lower right-hand corner. Oh, yes, 8/7/19, so, and we'll submit these plans also with the, the plans for the home.
So, all setbacks shall comply with the plan drawn by Robert Murphy.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else want to add?
Would you say the date of your plan was?
This one.
8/7. This is 8/7/19.